Hello everyone, Carlo Di Maria here with Superintendent Bill Hart, inviting everyone to our Homecoming Celebration this October 25th. It's gonna be a great day. We are dedicating this field to John Di Biasso, our great friend and great coach here in the city of Everett. Bill, why don't you tell us a little bit about Homecoming Day and the festivities that we have in store for everybody?
It's gonna be wild. We hope that you can join us. We're gonna start at 11 o'clock in the morning with a tailgate party right here on Chelsea Street behind the stadium. All kinds of things happening, food, vendors, fun for the family. 1:30 is the kickoff against Lynn. We hope that you're gonna be there because this is gonna be like no other. We know that you're gonna enjoy it, but you have to be here to enjoy it.
Set your alarms, lace up your sneakers, and get ready to hustle for a cause that hits home. Join us for the Homecoming Hustle, a 5K Run-Walk held in loving memory of Janet Conley O'Neil and all of the EPS employees who courageously battled cancer. This year, you won't be running alone. You'll be side by side with myself, EPS staff, and our Superintendent Billy Hart, who is sure to be walking the event. Who knows? Maybe you'll even beat one of them to the finish line. Registration kicks off at 7:30 a.m. and the race begins at 8:30 sharp. So grab your friends and let's show everyone what kind of community we have.
Hello Everett, it's time for a wonderful weekend called Homecoming. Homecoming starts on Friday, October 24th at 5 o'clock at Glendale Park. It's fun for the whole family. Please bring your family down to Glendale Park between 5:00 and 7:30 on October 24th for the kickoff to Homecoming Weekend. We will have fun games, we will have food, we will have entertainment, and some special visitors. If you're here, please come to Glendale Park. Let's kick off our Homecoming Weekend with fun for the whole family. See you there.
Hey everyone, Steve Gallagher here with the Everett Athletic Department. Listen, we are gearing up for the first ever Walk of Champions. This is one of our spotlight events for Homecoming Weekend next Saturday, October 25th. The walk is gonna start at the Connolly Center at 12:45 and they're gonna be marching down to Everett Veterans Memorial Stadium. This is going to be an awesome event. We have over 30 former Crimson Tide football greats coming back to take part in this event. They will be walking alongside Superintendent Bill Hart, Mayor Carlo Di Maria, other elected officials, and members of our band and cheerleading team. This is going to be such a great epic event. We want you here, we want more people involved to showcase the tradition, the excellence of our city. So please try and get there next Saturday, October 25th. Roll tide.
I love getting early, tailgating, nothing better. Homecoming, it's coming this way, Saturday, October 25th. I'm Josh DelGazo. My voice is gonna be heard inside that stadium. And at 11 a.m., I'm gonna be the first one here because we have tailgate action going on right here. You see the Connolly Center, this is Chelsea Street. We're gonna have an area set up, we're gonna have a live band playing, food trucks, and we're gonna be showcasing some of the very best highlights from the Coach Di Biasso era. So come on down, take in the Homecoming extravaganza, and be sure to go down memory lane. Oh, I can't wait, it's gonna be awesome.
Hello everyone, Carlo Di Maria here with Superintendent Bill Hart, inviting everyone to our Homecoming Celebration this October 25th. It's gonna be a great day. We are dedicating this field to John Di Biasso, our great friend and great coach here in the city of Everett. Bill, why don't you tell us a little bit about Homecoming Day and the festivities that we have in store for everybody?
It's gonna be wild. We hope that you can join us. We're gonna start at 11 o'clock in the morning with a tailgate party right here on Chelsea Street behind the stadium. All kinds of things happening, food, vendors, fun for the family. 1:30 is the kickoff against Lynn. We hope that you're gonna be there because this is gonna be like no other. We know that you're gonna enjoy it, but you have to be here to enjoy it.
Set your alarms, lace up your sneakers, and get ready to hustle for a cause that hits home. Join us for the Homecoming Hustle, a 5K Run-Walk held in loving memory of Janet Conley O'Neil and all of the EPS employees who courageously battled cancer. This year, you won't be running alone. You'll be side by side with myself, EPS staff, and our Superintendent Billy Hart, who is sure to be walking the event. Who knows? Maybe you'll even beat one of them to the finish line. Registration kicks off at 7:30 a.m. and the race begins at 8:30 sharp. So grab your friends and let's show everyone what kind of community we have.
Hello Everett, it's time for a wonderful weekend called Homecoming. Homecoming starts on Friday, October 24th at 5 o'clock at Glendale Park. It's fun for the whole family. Please bring your family down to Glendale Park between 5:00 and 7:30 on October 24th for the kickoff to Homecoming Weekend. We will have fun games, we will have food, we will have entertainment, and some special visitors. If you're here, please come to Glendale Park. Let's kick off our Homecoming Weekend with fun for the whole family. See you there.
Hey everyone, Steve Gallagher here with the Everett Athletic Department. Listen, we are gearing up for the first ever Walk of Champions. This is one of our spotlight events for Homecoming Weekend next Saturday, October 25th. The walk is gonna start at the Connolly Center at 12:45 and they're gonna be marching down to Everett Veterans Memorial Stadium. This is going to be an awesome event. We have over 30 former Crimson Tide football greats coming back to take part in this event. They will be walking alongside Superintendent Bill Hart, Mayor Carlo Di Maria, other elected officials, and members of our band and cheerleading team. This is going to be such a great epic event. We want you here, we want more people involved to showcase the tradition, the excellence of our city. So please try and get there next Saturday, October 25th. Roll tide.
I love getting early, tailgating, nothing better. Homecoming, it's coming this way, Saturday, October 25th. I'm Josh DelGazo. My voice is gonna be heard inside that stadium. And at 11 a.m., I'm gonna be the first one here because we have tailgate action going on right here. You see the Connolly Center, this is Chelsea Street. We're gonna have an area set up, we're gonna have a live band playing, food trucks, and we're gonna be showcasing some of the very best highlights from the Coach Di Biasso era. So come on down, take in the Homecoming extravaganza, and be sure to go down memory lane. Oh, I can't wait, it's gonna be awesome.
Hello everyone, Carlo Di Maria here with Superintendent Bill Hart, inviting everyone to our Homecoming Celebration this October 25th. It's gonna be a great day. We are dedicating this field to John Di Biasso, our great friend and great coach here in the city of Everett. Bill, why don't you tell us a little bit about Homecoming Day and the festivities that we have in store for everybody?
It's gonna be wild. We hope that you can join us. We're gonna start at 11 o'clock in the morning with a tailgate party right here on Chelsea Street behind the stadium. All kinds of things happening, food, vendors, fun for the family. 1:30 is the kickoff against Lynn. We hope that you're gonna be there because this is gonna be like no other. We know that you're gonna enjoy it, but you have to be here to enjoy it.
Set your alarms, lace up your sneakers, and get ready to hustle for a cause that hits home. Join us for the Homecoming Hustle, a 5K Run-Walk held in loving memory of Janet Conley O'Neil and all of the EPS employees who courageously battled cancer. This year, you won't be running alone. You'll be side by side with myself, EPS staff, and our Superintendent Billy Hart, who is sure to be walking the event. Who knows? Maybe you'll even beat one of them to the finish line. Registration kicks off at 7:30 a.m. and the race begins at 8:30 sharp. So grab your friends and let's show everyone what kind of community we have.
Hello Everett, it's time for a wonderful weekend called Homecoming. Homecoming starts on Friday, October 24th at 5 o'clock at Glendale Park. It's fun for the whole family. Please bring your family down to Glendale Park between 5:00 and 7:30 on October 24th for the kickoff to Homecoming Weekend. We will have fun games, we will have food, we will have entertainment, and some special visitors. If you're here, please come to Glendale Park. Let's kick off our Homecoming Weekend with fun for the whole family. See you there.
Hey everyone, Steve Gallagher here with the Everett Athletic Department. Listen, we are gearing up for the first ever Walk of Champions. This is one of our spotlight events for Homecoming Weekend next Saturday, October 25th. The walk is gonna start at the Connolly Center at 12:45 and they're gonna be marching down to Everett Veterans Memorial Stadium. This is going to be an awesome event. We have over 30 former Crimson Tide football greats coming back to take part in this event. They will be walking alongside Superintendent Bill Hart, Mayor Carlo Di Maria, other elected officials, and members of our band and cheerleading team. This is going to be such a great epic event. We want you here, we want more people involved to showcase the tradition, the excellence of our city. So please try and get there next Saturday, October 25th. Roll tide.
I love getting early, tailgating, nothing better. Homecoming, it's coming this way, Saturday, October 25th. I'm Josh DelGazo. My voice is gonna be heard inside that stadium. And at 11 a.m., I'm gonna be the first one here because we have tailgate action going on right here. You see the Connolly Center, this is Chelsea Street. We're gonna have an area set up, we're gonna have a live band playing, food trucks, and we're gonna be showcasing some of the very best highlights from the Coach Di Biasso era. So come on down, take in the Homecoming extravaganza, and be sure to go down memory lane. Oh, I can't wait, it's gonna be awesome. It's gonna be awesome.
on Monday, October 20th, 2025. The time is 6:33 p.m. Clerk, could you call the roll to determine a quorum?
Mr. Almeda Barrows.
Present.
Ms. Babcock.
Present.
Ms. Barrows.
Present.
Ms. Cornelio.
Present.
Ms. Cristiano.
Present.
Mayor Di Maria. Mr. Dinoffrio.
Present.
Ms. Garen.
Present.
Mr. La Monica. Chairperson Hurley.
Present.
Eight members present.
Eight members present. We have a quorum. Could everyone join me in saluting the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I would just like to clarify, we have Vice Chair Cristiano attending remotely this evening, so all voting needs to be done by roll call. And Committee Member Joe La Monica sends his regrets that he could not attend today as he welcomed a new granddaughter Emmy this morning. Congratulations to the Monica family. Clerk, nope, just kidding. Superintendent, the next order of business?
Roman numeral three, reading of the records for Monday, October 6th, 2025.
Make a motion to waive the readings and place on file.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Barrows, seconded by Ms. Babcock to waive the reading for Monday, October 6th, 2025, and place on file. Roll call.
Mr. Almeda Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
Eight zero. Motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Roman numeral four, public comment.
Make a motion to open public comment.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Ms. Barrows to open public comment. Roll call.
Mr. Almeda Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
So moved, eight zero. Public comment is now open. As a reminder, speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to present and must begin their comments by stating their names, city and town, or organization. All speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner. Everett School Committee Public Comment time limit is 15 minutes. After that timeframe has been met, the chairperson may request an extension from the membership, which requires a vote. And written comments longer than three minutes may be submitted to the presiding chairperson before or after the meeting. And with that, we have one speaker, Mr. Forton. Welcome, Mr. Forton.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. David Forton, Ward Three, Ward Four. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Ms. Hurley for the chairperson for responding to an email, responding to me by an email. I was very surprised and very pleased. Thank you. As a parent of children who attended Everett High School and Everett Schools, and a grandparent, I'm interested in what the Everett School District is going to do or doing to bring back that young 13-year-old boy who was kidnapped by ICE. This is a serious problem, ladies and gentlemen. Should not have ever been done. Should have never, ever been removed from Everett. Yes, he did wrong. He should be punished for his wrongdoing, but not by kidnapping and being taken 500 miles away, from his family especially. I would like to know how ICE found out about it so quickly. I hear rumors. I listen to rumors. And there are rumors going around as to ICE and the police station. There is apparently a connection there, or maybe I should say allegedly. This has got to stop, this ICE business. It's just got to stop. We have to get rid of these people. If they're going to be kidnapping our children from schools, from our schools, it's a terrible thing. I always thought that what was sealed, remains sealed, was never let out. But there's a lot of information let out on this young man. That's wrong. That is wrong. As we know, kidnapping is unlawful and should be punishable by those who do it. If I reached out to any child and kidnapped them and brought them across state lines, they'd have me gone for a long time. It should be held true for everybody. I'd like to know, is there an investigation being requested by the school committee? Or by the superintendent, maybe? Or by DC? What are we doing to help this family and to help this child come back to his family where he belongs, in Everett? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forton. Seeing no other speakers on the sign-in sheet, is there anyone that would like to speak at public comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to close public comment?
Make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Ms. Cornelio to close public comment. Roll call.
Mr. Almeda Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
So moved, eight zero. Public comment is now closed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Roman numeral five, report of the student representative.
Emma, go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. This week at EHS is Spirit Week. Today, students dressed up as bikers or surfers as seen in Disney's Teen Beach movie. Tomorrow, pairs will dress up as iconic duos. Wednesday, the school will be showing off a variety of cultures. Thursday is Decades Day with inspiration from the 1920s to early 2000s. And to kick off Homecoming Weekend on Friday, the school will be full of Tide Pride. The Lafayette School is having Spirit Week this week as well, and the Mattie is having a Halloween Spirit Week next week. Some of the elementary schools are also wearing orange on Wednesday to celebrate Unity Day, to bring awareness to bullying. The Parlin is hosting trunk or treat on the 23rd at 3:30, and it is definitely a crowd pleaser. On Friday, players of the football team, band, color guard, and cheerleaders will tour the pre-k through eight schools. It is such a rewarding experience for us high schoolers to visit the schools, staff, and younger students. That night, Family Night will be held at Glendale Park, and the next morning, some of our students, staff, and athletes will participate in the Homecoming Hustle. There will also be a pancake breakfast that morning. The Homecoming game against Lynn English will start at 1:30 at Veterans Memorial Stadium, and I'm looking forward to lots of participation and Tide Pride this week. I want to take a moment to thank the administration and all of you for bringing back a big Homecoming celebration. The students at EHS are ecstatic. It is so nice to see our community come together. Our full representative council is also elected. Freshman Nicole Mitchell, sophomore Ella Telogene, junior Mia Allen, and senior Leandra Panero. I'm very excited to work alongside them. We had our first meeting today, and the current bathroom policy was the main topic that we discussed. This Saturday, Leandra, Nicole, and I attended the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives. Thank you for sending us. It was very insightful and a great opportunity to meet other students from around Mass. The ninth, 10th, and 11th grade student councils have also been selected. The junior class will be led by President Olivia Dresser, the 10th grade by Frank Ritchie Legine, and the freshman class by President Emanuele Martins. Girls volleyball is holding their annual pink-out game tonight for breast cancer awareness. Our unified basketball team will have a game tomorrow at 4:00 in the gym. And next Tuesday, our girls soccer team will have their senior night. Family University is open to any high school student or eighth-grade family and will be held at the high school on October 28th. This Thursday, students who registered for the PSAT will take the test, and that day at lunch, the AP Government Class will hold a voter registration jive during all five lunches outside the nurse's office. The mock trial team has also, sorry, will be having their first meeting on the 22nd. Other clubs, including Fashion Club, Newspaper Club, and the STEM Club, have convened for the school year as well. Thank you all, and happy Homecoming Week.
Thank you, Emma.
Make a motion to accept the report of the student representative and place it on file.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Ms. Cornelio to accept the report of the student representative and place on file. Roll call.
Mr. Almeda Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barrows. Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
So moved. Motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Roman numeral number six, item one, Superintendent's Update. Let me first begin by acknowledging the energy by which Ms. Perry delivers those remarks. And let me also remind you that besides holding a very high grade point average, she's involved in most of those activities. She's extremely involved here in this Everett High School community and beyond, and I wanted to thank her for that continuing, continuous involvement. I know the meeting today, Ms. Barrows attended and called me and said, what a great group that we have, great young people coming together to talk about important issues that face them. So thank you. I won't repeat all of the various events that the students are involved with, but they all can, most of them can be found on our website if anybody chooses to look at them. And of course, Homecoming was her last comment, and I'll talk a little bit about that, along with Parent University and my remarks. So thank you again, Ms. Perry. This past week, I had the pleasure of welcoming Massachusetts Secretary of, from the Executive Office of Technology Services and Security, Jason Snyder, to Everett High School. I was joined also that day by our chairperson Samantha Hurley, Principal Braga, Dr. Braga who's here, Everett Teachers Association Kim Auger, and members of the leadership team as the secretary toured Everett High School and interacted with our students. The secretary had an opportunity to visit three of our classrooms. Project Lead the Way Engineering Design Development that's led and taught by Dr. Anna Siders, Advanced Placement Physics taught by Adam Simpson, and Biotechnology too, taught by Dr. Jeffrey Ahern. The secretary called and asked to come here because he'd heard such great things about the work that we're doing here at Everett High School. And believe me, our students were shining examples of what we all know. The secretary followed up after his conversations with each of those classrooms, completely engaged in the work. He said, I have visited many, many high schools, and he was so pleased to come here because of the good work that our students and our staff have done. So I wanted to thank him publicly for taking an interest in Everett and talking about our great students and the work that they're doing. This past week, we had several of our school communities celebrate Fall Festival, which is outdoor and indoor activities for family. The Lafayette School, the Madeleine English School, the Whittier School, the Kavarian School was extremely well-attended. Our families were completely engaged in activities, in food, and fun, and friendship, and real community. So I want to thank the members of the PTOs, the leadership at each of the schools, and the faculty and staff who volunteered in the afternoon and evening, setting those up. A lot of smiles. We have some great pictures from those events, and for those of you who are here, we have them on our district highlights that are here on the front table. And our school committee members and families do get updates periodically through email to let them see the activities that are happening in and around our schools. So Ms. Perry mentioned Family University. Everett will hold its second annual Family University on Tuesday, October 28th, from 5:00 to 8:00 here at Everett High School. We have some great community partnerships that will be joining us that evening, partly to present on various topics. We have, for example, the Cambridge Health Alliance, a great partner of ours here in Everett. They will be presenting. They have several sessions for our parents and workshops. We have the guidance counselors who'll be presenting on getting ready for college, financial aid workshops, all kinds of activities for parents to engage in, to understand and navigate the higher ed system. And we have folks from the Metro North Regional Employment Board that will be here talking about opportunities for our young people beyond Everett High School, and some additional and various presentations that'll be held throughout the high school that evening. So for parents, as Ms. Perry said, eighth-grade parents who'd like to come and learn a little bit more about Everett High School and the work that we do here and beyond, it's open and free. There'll be some food as well because it is right after or around the supper hour. So please take advantage of that. There are more details on our website. And finally, I wanted to just remind folks that we do have Homecoming Celebration this coming Friday and Saturday. This is no small feat. We have staff both here at the schools and with the city working together, putting on a program to celebrate a lot of things that we do well in Everett. Our music programs, our football team, our friendship amongst community members. And we will kick that off Friday evening with a Family Night right out here outside of Everett High School at Glendale Park. Starting at about 5:00 till 7:30, we have, all free by the way, to the public, thanks to donations by various vendors and organizations and businesses across the city and beyond. So we'll have something for everybody on Friday evening. I know there's a little bit of a surprise on Friday evening for those who are in attendance. Let's just say the skies will be lit up. Saturday, we have a pancake breakfast beginning here at the high school at 8:30 in the cafeteria. They're asking for donations, and that will support Crimson Tide Athletics. We have, once again, a Homecoming Hustle, which is a 5K run or walk. And as Dr. Braga challenged me to participate, he's going to run, I'm going to walk. There's like a 30-year age difference, so I'm not even going to try, Dr. Braga. So please, if you haven't decided to join us on Saturday morning, there's still time to go to our webpage and click on the link to sign up and participate that morning. And with, hopefully with the weather is with us, it'll be a fun morning. This is in remembrance, remembrance originally of Janet Conley O'Neil, a teacher and administrator at the Everett Public Schools who was taken too young from breast cancer, and an organization developed upon her death to support and raise funds for breast cancer awareness. Since her death and acknowledgement of that death, there has been so many others in our school community in particular that we honor and recognize and miss each and every day here at the schools. So the proceeds of that will go right here to support cancer treatment at our own Cambridge Health Alliance, Wooden Hospital Everett campus. So the donations and the proceeds will directly benefit folks. So, the donations and the proceeds will directly benefit folks here in Everett. There'll be a tailgate party at 11:00, a Walk of Champions about 12:45, a field dedication at 1:00, and then, of course, the game at 1:30 against Lynn English. So, I'm hoping that all of you can come to some, if not all, of these events that were carefully planned so that everyone had a place to enjoy themselves. So, from here on Friday night and all day Saturday, starting in the morning, there's something for everybody. So, please, take a peek at the website and join us when you can. Madam Chair, that's my report for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent. Are there any questions?
Accept the Superintendent's report and place on file.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barrows, seconded by Ms. Cornelio, to accept the Superintendent's report and place on file. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
8-0, motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Item number two, School Improvement Plan Presentation. So, in this particular case, I'm not asking for a vote, but asking for your indulgence and patience as I call upon a couple of our building leaders, along with Assistant Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Student Success, Dr. Adams, to come forward. I have been stressing since I started here that we needed to develop our school improvement plans to be really connected to the work that each of our leaders do with their respective staffs, and then share it with the community. And I think, well, I believe that we have not done the best job of probably talking about that kind of planning and work that is done. So, tonight, with your indulgence, I've asked two of our leaders to come forward and to describe the plan that they have in place, and Dr. Adams will certainly kick it off so you can hear how that is pulled together, and then what our various schools do to institute and execute the plans that have been developed. The two that you'll hear from tonight, Janet Taylor from the Lafayette School and Paula Lambresia from the Madeleine English, they'll highlight their plans, their goal, and talk about next steps. Not so different from some of our other schools, so without going through each of them at your table, in front of you in the red folder, we have included a format that I think is easy to follow for each of you. It shows the work that each school did, but it hopefully will be just kind of quickly to be able to, for you to peruse later. And certainly, all the principals that have been leading that effort are here with us this evening, so if there's an individual school plan that you have a question about, I know that each of them will be happy to answer the question for you at the conclusion of the meeting. And with that, if we would, I'd ask you to call upon, first, Dr. Margaret Adams to come forward, also joined by Janet Taylor and Paula Lambresia for the presentation.
Make a motion to bring Dr. Adams and the following school leaders.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Barrows, seconded by Ms. Cornelio, to invite Dr. Adams, Principal Taylor, and Principal Lambresia before us. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, 8-0.
So moved, 8-0, motion passed. Welcome, everybody.
I know they're going to utilize some slides, and they'll tee that up, but we'll turn it right first to Dr. Adams.
Good evening, everybody. As promised, we're here back tonight to share a little more about specific initiatives and plans at each of the schools. Last school committee meeting, I was here sharing some of our MCAS accountability. The school improvement plans are our opportunity to be responsive to all of that data with specific initiatives and outlines of how each school is moving that work forward about increasing student achievement overall. So, last time, we shared our instructional priority for this year. Last spring, we began that work, looking really closely at all of our data, both our literacy, our math data, our attendance, our SEL data, and drew conclusions that a real strong need for our students overall is around increasing literacy, and believing that having a cohesive collective focus on increasing literacy outcomes for our students collectively is a great need. We developed this instructional priority as a team, that instructional priority outlines that we would use, go ahead, next slide, really focus in on some very specific student literacy instructional strategies with our high-quality instructional materials, using data to ensure that our students with, all our students, but specifically our students with disabilities and multilingual learners, are working towards grade-level proficiency in reading, writing, fluency, comprehension, and their academic language. We shared that instructional priority last spring with staff and included the, began the school year with a strong focus around really having everyone buy into that priority. We know that collectively, all of us focused on that priority are going to have success for our students by leveraging our resources and focusing our resources on increasing outcomes in literacy, focusing our professional development very carefully and thoughtfully on increasing outcomes in literacy for our students, focusing on continued use of high-quality instructional materials that provide our students access to grade-level content, and really leveraging our professional learning communities that are occurring in schools, where groups of teachers are coming together to look at data, look at writing, look at the curriculum, look at their lessons, and thinking about how do we devise lessons, instructional strategies that best meet the needs of our students. As a result of that work, we've, we developed some instructional strategies that we're promoting school-wide, district-wide. These are all based on research, what we know works with our students. We want to increase opportunities for our students to read about text, annotate text, have conversations about text, read together in partners collaboratively, and really develop their ability to write about what they're reading and learning. So, our planning process for the school improvement planning process was, school leaders looked on an ongoing basis all last year at our data, beginning, middle, and end-of-year data, our MCAS data as soon as it became available this spring, this summer, and looked really closely at that data to identify specific needs. Collaboratively in the spring of last year, school leaders came together and outlined some common goals. You'll see across the plans, a focus on three goals, English Language Arts, Math, and Social Emotional Learning. If you put them side by side, there are a lot of similarities in the plans, not because we're copying from each other, but it's a spirit of real collaboration and thoughtful discussions about what's working in buildings and about sharing that across buildings and building upon success where there is, and really building a community among our school leaders of continued improvement. School leaders, go back, sorry. School leaders also shared those plans with each other. We sat and actually gave feedback to each other and had the opportunity to look at each other's plans. District leaders also gave feedback along the way, our curriculum directors, superintendent, myself, and others, giving feedback about how to enhance and other strategies to incorporate in those plans. Our school site councils also gave feedback, and we're able to review those and provide additional input into those plans. And those goals were shared by school leaders with school staff, again, enlisting them to think about how, as a school community, they can support those particular goals that were outlined. So, you'll see common strategic initiatives across the plans. We're highlighting two of them tonight, and you'll see similarities if you put them all next to each other. We're trying to leverage our professional learning communities within the school days, where teachers are working together, looking at data on an ongoing basis, thinking about what else they can do to improve instruction, sharing best practices with each other, looking at work together, looking at writing, thinking about how do we implement the materials we have in front of us to best meet the needs of our students. Leveraging their instructional leadership team, these are teams in each of the buildings made up of teachers, who are thinking deeply with school leaders about how to support improvement in the building, what are the things that they can do to support their colleagues, how can they work collaboratively to support the efforts outlined in school improvement plans. Walk-throughs that allow us to look at instruction and think about how to support the schools in how they're implementing the plans, how materials are being implemented, how the best strategies are being implemented, and how our students are moving forward. And that's both in ELA and in math. Again, also, you'll see a strong focus on getting our students to read and write across content areas often. We also, you'll see goals in the social-emotional on two areas, one around monitoring student attendance and providing ongoing student and family support, ensuring a culture and a sense of belonging for all of our students. You'll also see work around implementation of PBIS, which stands for Positive Behavior Intervention Systems. There are ways that we can foster, as a community, around clarity around how we work together, learn together in a building, how do we explain to students and enlist students in the behavioral expectations in a building, and that's outlined in each of the school's PBIS systems, and you'll see that in that SEL goal. And so, we'll start with the English to sort of highlight one of those plans.
And I have to say, if I can add before Mr. Lambresia starts, I've had the opportunity to participate in these learning communities and data chats, and they're rich in discussion, and the outcomes, I know, are going to prove a value because the teaching staff and those facilitating these discussions are really robust, and I think we're learning from those conversations and data review of what to do next and how to do it. And before, again, I'd like to once again acknowledge all the principals that are here. If you could just allow me a moment, starting to my left, Laurie Stokes, who is at the pre-k program at the Old Everett High School, Devon Aprouze, the interim principal at the Webster School, Dalene Bognali, the principal of the Parlance, Tiffany Bayakay, who is principal at the Devon School, Mr. McLucas from the Whittier School, from the Kavarian School. We have, I was waiting for you, I saw the face, Mr. Norman, thank you for being here. Did I miss anybody? Dr. Braga is here from Everett High School. There's Ms. Redler from the Adams Preschool. Now, did I get everybody? I think I have. So, thank you for joining your colleagues here tonight. Again, their plans and the process that they went through were very similar. Again, I want to thank them for the leadership they show at the school every day and bringing these plans together for our review tonight. So, Ms. Lambresia?
Superintendent Hart, Madam Chair Hurley, members of the school committee, thank you for inviting me to sit here tonight to speak about our school improvement plan and allowing us to represent not only the Madeleine English School, but other principals within the district. So, thank you. First, we'll start with our ELA goal. By the end of the 2025-2026 school year, we believe that 25% of our students in grades 3 to 8 will meet or exceed expectations on the ELA MCAS exam. And then, through data-driven targeted literacy instruction and meeting the needs of all of our students, we're hoping that 70 to 75% of our students in grades K to 2 will score at or above benchmark according to our DIBELS, DIBELS placement test, DIBELS test indicator. Just, just so you know, DIBELS, just for clarity purposes, DIBELS does mean dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills, and it measures the student's reading skills and growth. Next slide. How are we going to do it? Through our PLCs, our grade-level teams will meet weekly, analyze student data, look at student work with focus on additional reading and writing implemented in our lessons, and then plan for individual student needs using our high-quality instructional materials, as well as the RACIST rubric for answering open response questions. The RACIST rubric, we're asking students to restate the question, answer the question, cite the evidence from the text, explain the evidence, and then summarize it in their own words. Again, we're going to utilize partner reading and writing strategies throughout all of our classrooms, across all content areas, with scaffolds for students that need scaffolds, and extended responses on essays. So, our main goal is to get students to do additional reading and writing within the classroom day. We have implemented, like Superintendent Hart mentioned, we did implement data chats. Our goal is to get students to look at how they're scoring on their, on their eye-ready assessments, and then making goals, individuals' goals for each individual student's, after they're, they made the assessments, after they looked at their data, making a goal for the next time they are assessed throughout the year. We're also, at the Madeleine English School, we implemented a independent reading-at-home initiative. It's called Open Books, Open Minds. We're hoping that students are able to read 20 minutes a night, keeping a reading log every night, whether they read independently or someone reads to them at home. We're hoping that that will help with our test scores and allowing them to read more outside of the classroom as well as in the classroom. Data shows that 20 minutes a day, if students do read 20 minutes a day, 1.8 million, they're exposed to 1.8 million words a year, so the more they read, the better, the better we'll all be, and the more successful they will be. Next slide. Transitioning to our mathematics goal, through lesson development and the development of critical thinking skills, we're hoping that, we're focused on 25% of our students in grades 3 to 8 will meet or exceed expectation on the 2025 math MCAS test. How are we going to do that? Again, implement three times a year diagnostic tests using eye-ready, and then, right after, we're testing our students, using that data to make tweaks to our lesson plans and instructional practices in the classroom. We're constantly looking at our student work with open responses, with the additional open response questions, we're assigning our students and making changes, again, to our instructional practices in the, in the classroom. And then, during PLCs, we're also reviewing high-level instructional strategies to be used in grades 6 to 8. For instance, the three-read, three-read strategy, where students read the prompt three times, the first time for understanding, the second time for quantity and math information, and the third time to answer the question and create a strategy to answer the question. We are going to leverage our instructional coaches, and through walkthroughs with Dr. Adams and her team, give immediate feedback to our teachers about the co-teaching model in our classroom to ensure all students with disabilities, our students, our needs of students with disabilities are met, including proper scaffolding and small group instruction. Transitioning again to our social-emotional learning goal, we're hoping that our chronic acetyism rate continues to decrease, it has decreased from year to year, but we're hoping it continues to decrease this year. We're hoping from 27.6% last year to 22% this year. Also, we're looking to decrease the number of total behavioral incidents from 22% of students last year to 10% through our implementation of PBIS strategies in the class, in our school system. If the students aren't in the classroom, they aren't learning. So, our job is to create a culture of positivity, so that way, it allows the students to stay in the classroom and learn from their teacher. How are we going to improve attendance? We have a newsletter that we constantly informs families how important attendance is on a daily basis, and we're going to implement weekly attendance reviews, as well as specific letters going to parents if students are, their attendance is becoming a concern, also additional phone calls, home visits, visits with families, meetings with families, anything to reach out to our families and ensure that they know how important attendance is in getting their students in the classroom on a daily basis. Next slide. We've also implemented a Bulldog Pride in the Madeleine English School. Our mascot is a bulldog, so we're trying to use the bulldog for our PBIS school-wide. Pride stands for perseverance, respect, integrity, determination, and empathy. We're actually going to use our Student of the Month awards based on our pillars. We're actually going to use our Student of the Month awards based on our pillars, which are right there, our core pillars. And a student who will win a student award each month will show one of these pillars. Also, we're going to continue to analyze behavioral data to support individual student needs and build strong relationships in the school system. Again, that's just a glimpse of the great things that are happening at the Madeleine English School. I appreciate, again, I appreciate everyone for there, for allowing us to come in and talk about the Madeleine English. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambrisha.
If you want to ask questions of Mr. Lambrisha, we can do that before Ms. Taylor begins.
Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for you. Thank you, Principal, for your presentation. Can you talk a little bit more about your PBIS strategy?
Yeah, it's, so what we're trying to do is we're trying to create a positive environment in the school system, getting the kids excited about coming to school, being a part of the community. So, we're rewarding our students for showing their actions based on our pillars. So, if a student is, shows perseverance, you know, they had a tough test and they fought through it, they studied the night before, they get rewards. They get their name announced over the intercom. If their teacher thinks that, you know, this past month, they showed perseverance throughout the month, they can win the Student of the Month based on perseverance. So, it's just a way to get students excited about coming to school. It will help with the attendance because students will like to be in our school system and in the classroom. They'll be excited about learning, and it'll create a sense of welcome-ness in our school system.
Got it. Thank you. For the reading part of it, that you mentioned, the 20 minutes at night that students could enter for reading, are we, not sure if your library is open in your school?
Yeah, no, it's, so it's not open. So, what we did is, through the help of Dr. Adams, we actually created book carts for each grade level. And every week, our younger students, K to two, K to three, every week, they check out a new book and they take it home. And then, the older students, every two weeks, because those books are a little older. But we did provide each grade level with a book cart worth about 200 books on.
Okay.
And all those books came from our library.
Got it. Yeah, but that's, that was my question, not specific about the library. But as you know, most of, many of our students are low-income and like how they're going to read. Are we giving them a book or are we expecting them to get a book, to buy a book and read? Thank you. The last thing that I want to mention, and I'm going to also mention to everyone, is I am very glad to hear the social-emotional part of it because sometimes as adults and as a school district, we really want to see good data, and we forget aside what our students go through, especially our students in Everett. So, I'm very delighted to hear about the social-emotional part of it because it's not only about increasing attendance and reducing kids that are not coming to school, but it's really what you guys presented is what's going on with them that they are missing school, especially our kids, as you know them well. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Ms. Papak?
Could you just tell me what the acronym PBIS means?
Yep, sure. Behavioral Supports Interventions and...
Positive Behavioral Intervention Systems. It's a very popular structure in schools around supporting the social-emotional learning needs, of which, as Mr. Barrows said, the social-emotional curriculum is one component of it. The values that are represented in, for example, the English Pride is one component of a bigger system meant to be responsive not only to behavioral health, but mental health as well.
So, the other question was, you're using the RACES rubric, which is an acronym, R-A-C-E-S, just for the audience because maybe they didn't hear clearly. So, the RACES rubric is an acronym for restate?
Yep. R is restate the question. A is answer the question. C is cite text from the, cite text. E is explain the evidence, and S is summarize your information.
What, so, is this rubric used for writing at all grade levels?
It's predominantly at the K to eights. When you switch to the high school, it, you know, becomes much more sophisticated. It's a mnemonic device to give students a way to attack text. And so, imagine how powerful it's going to be. The kids are doing it in kindergarten, and they're building upon it each year using the same sort of strategy to attack a writing piece. But we're going to ask them to get more sophisticated, more pieces of evidence, higher level of text, but it's growing with them, that strategy. Each is attached with a rubric of expectations that we have for students about how they attack each portion of that. And teachers are looking at student writing. The process is getting started in the next couple of weeks, where teachers are looking at writing and thinking about, how do I help this particular group of students move forward and improve their writing along a continuum? So, this is where they are now in September, and we're looking to see improvement as the year goes on in their work. So, it's an acronym, a mnemonic device to enlist students in a strategy to be able to write for themselves. And you can imagine, at the college level, this is a strategy that if we can get students to do it in kindergarten, it's going to work when they get to college as well.
Yeah, I mean, I use acronyms in colleges for revision. ARMS, add, remove, move, substitute. I think acronyms are great, and I wanted to, for parents to hear that too because they can think about, if they're supporting their younger writers, what does that actually mean? What do those letters mean? And that's an easier way to remember how to meet the expectation. So, by the time they get to eighth grade, they'll be the ones teaching the next generation what RACES means. And I like the acronym, Racing to the Finish Line, you know? To get it done.
Yeah, we've got all kinds of little cute little...
Oh, it's cute. And then, my last question's a little bit of a tougher question. So, one of the measurements that I noticed was sort of decreasing behavioral incidents to a certain percentage. That, you know, I'm just curious what would be classified as a behavioral incident? That might, you know, how that would be measured?
Yeah, so, at the Madeleine English School, we have our, we have two specialized programs down there, a learning adaptive behavior program and our language-based program. Those students need additional supports. So, data, whether it's academic data or... Attendance data or discipline data is very important to our success. So, what we try and do is any time we meet with a student or a student is referred to the main office, we count that as a referral and part of our behavioral incidents. So, what we're trying to do is keep the students in the classroom, and we're hoping that by creating a positive culture, students will more likely want to stay in the classroom as opposed to be sent to the main office. If they're getting sent to the main office, they're not in the classroom, they're not learning, and they're just falling farther and farther behind.
I think, too, it's also leveraging school adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, to create strategies and systems that support individual students. And you'll see that outlined in the plan, where we're trying to leverage those social and mental health supports that are in schools to support individual students. As behavior is communication, and so, our job is to figure out what the student is communicating and what we need to be put into place to meet the needs of those students.
Well, I think that if you're going to improve certain behavior incidents, you may improve attendance, too. Because sometimes that goes hand in hand. That might be keeping that child away from school or keeping someone else away from school. So, you know, if everything is more positive and more comfortable, then everyone will feel great. Thank you for answering all those questions. Very comprehensive. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Papak. Any further questions for Principal Lambrisha? Thank you. Go Bulldogs.
From my alma mater, the Lafayette School, Mrs. Taylor will go through her school improvement plan, and I think you'll see some similarities. But each school has, as I said earlier, developed a plan that addresses what they've decided, along with all those folks who were part of the process, what will work best for them and their students. So, with that, Mrs. Taylor.
Yeah, thank you. Echoing Mr. Lambrisha, thank you to the school committee and Superintendent Hart for inviting me tonight to share the Lafayette School Improvement Plan with you. But before I begin, I'd like to, again, thank Superintendent Hart and Dr. Adams for supporting the principals and our teams with developing our school improvement plans that are data-driven and strategic. To begin, I would like to share with you our English Language Arts Schools for the school year. So, we're hoping that 70% of our students in grades K to 2 will score at or above benchmark according to our DIBELS assessment by the end of this school year. And we're also hoping that our grades three through eight students, that 34% of our students will meet or exceed expectations on the MCAS ELA assessment. And to reach our goals, we are focusing on the implementation of best practices in literacy, including partner reading, turn and talk, small group instruction, and Lexia during literacy blocks. Lexia is a personalized adaptive online reading program that develops both foundational and advanced phonics skills and literacy skills. This year so far, we have also implemented literacy data chats with all of our K through eight students, and we will provide testing updates and goals with our families. To continue with our English Language Arts action planning, you'll see in the first photo that our students are engaging in academic discourse with their peers by utilizing our turn and talk strategy. And then, in the center photo, you'll see our students are answering comprehension questions using complete sentences by restating the question. In our last photo, you'll see our student here utilizing different ways to practice letter formation in their literacy block. Also, to continue with our ELA action planning, we have been providing consistent collaboration by implementing structured professional learning communities and vertical alignment meetings to analyze student work utilizing this very specific student work analysis protocol that is facilitated by our instructional coaches. Also, we have been collaborating with our sub-separate special education program staff to identify student profile needs in literacy and math and providing professional development for these staff members and ensuring access to high-quality instructional materials during literacy and math. And next, I would like to share with you our mathematics goal. By the end of the 25-26 school year, we're hoping that 30% of our Lafayette students in grades three through eight will meet or exceed expectations on MCAS mathematics. And to reach our goals, we have developed some actionable next steps. Like, similar to ELA, we have implemented math data chats with our students to set goals that will also be shared with our families. We have also collaborated with the instructional leadership team within our building to analyze data, establish next goals, and continue action planning based on the data that we are revealing. Our instructional coaches have also focused on providing support to teachers, EL teachers, special education teachers, standards-driven instruction for math. To continue with our mathematics action planning, we are also providing consistent content and coherence by ensuring these instructional routines that you'll see in all of our K through eight math blocks. So, we're utilizing the strategy of individual think time during math, turn and talk, also the four Rs, which is repeat, rephrase, reword, and record. And we're also utilizing the three reads of problem strategy. Moving into our social-emotional learning goal, we're hoping that by the end of the 25-26 school year, our student attendance rate will improve to 94%, and we will reduce our student chronic absenteeism rate to 25%. Also, like the Madeleine English School, we are also focusing on behavioral incident rate, and we're hoping that will decrease to 3%. Again, for our social-emotional learning goals, we have developed actionable next steps. We have implemented a school-wide attendance initiative where we do homeroom perfect attendance morning announcements, and then, we also have homeroom attendance champions. We have also facilitated weekly attendance, student attendance support team meetings with our school counselors to identify students with chronic absenteeism and to develop next steps to support our students and our families. And then, we have also started providing information to families and parents regarding the importance of school attendance through flyers, through monthly newsletters, class dojo. And we're really focusing on targeting our K through two families, just based on data. And then, we have also implemented, like the Madeleine English School, a school-wide Positive Behavioral Intervention and Support System. We are the Lafayette PAWS, where we are practicing kindness, acting responsibly, working hard, and showing respect. We are also choosing our Students of the Month using our PBIS system. We are also implementing lessons to introduce these behavioral expectations in a corresponding matrix to students with weekly incentives. And our social-emotional learning team will analyze behavioral incident data on a weekly basis to identify areas of need and, again, to plan for student supports, along with family supports if needed. So, at this time, I'm happy to take any questions.
Ms. Karen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I just have a quick question about when you're trying to get the percentage of, for example, the percentage of students in grades three through eight that would meet and exceed expectations on the MCAS, that's 34%. 30% of students would meet or exceed expectations on MCAS mathematics. It just, to me, and I'm probably wrong, it does seem like a low percentage, and I wanted to know how you came up with that percentage number?
Yeah, so, every goal that we set is truly based on our data that's in front of us, right? So, last school year, about 24% of our students at the Lafayette School met or exceeded expectations on the ELA MCAS. So, we kind of take that number, and we also take the beginning of the year data that we see from I-Ready. We use this tool called proficiency predictor that, based on how the students perform in the beginning of the school year on I-Ready, it kind of helps us predict what the percentage will be for meeting or exceeding expectations for MCAS.
And obviously, our goal is, our goal is 100%. But it's sort of a balance between setting a measurable goal. As Janet said, based upon our data, we feel like that's an achievable goal. But our real goal, and all of the leaders behind you will say, our goal is 100% of our students meet and exceeding. That's what we're working towards every day. We're working towards our students growing as readers, writers, and mathematicians, scientists. But we also had to set an achievable goal. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Yes.
But it's a great question. Great question.
Yeah, no, clearly, you're, you know, doing it slowly, one thing at a time.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And striving toward every single student making progress and growing towards making proficiency and meeting those standards. And our goal is always 100% in that we have a high bar. But we also had to set an achievable goal of what we thought was achievable.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I'm glad that that question was asked because I think that when we had a presentation on MCAS data, there were folks that may have misunderstood what the percentages that we were reporting on. Granted, they are goals that we're setting. There's achievements that have been made, but there is a long way to go. It's just that we are not going in the opposite direction on almost all of our categories by grade. by grade, and I think that's the distinction that folks who have misaligned that information, we are not going to be happy until we get to a better place. It's incremental, but we are going in the right trajectory, and we will continue to do so with informed decisions and data that helps back up our choices on strategy, and, you know, there's a long way to go. But we have to celebrate those successes, and we have them, and so we're going to continue to work on that. So, you know, I know that it isn't stellar, but it is on its way up. And we have a large group of our population, and if you look at kind of on a color chart, we have the meet or exceed category, and then we have this big group in the middle that they're just not quite there yet, they're not really bad, but they're not quite there yet, and those are the students that will, you more than likely, go into that category that Dr. Adams just said, and then there's a group of students that are really below grade, maybe by two grades, and those are the folks that we're doing some additional intervention and work with, so that we can get them to move up quicker than we would, you know, we expect, but we're going to make that happen, and it's very deliberate. You know, it's not because we're avoiding it, we're heading it head-on, but it does take time. So I just want to be sure I cleared up what these percentages mean and what we're doing to get them where we want them to be.
Mr. Barrows.
Thank you. Thanks, Superintendent. Thank you for that presentation and all the great work that you are doing. Something that I just want to comment on as part of the social-emotional learning, and perhaps we already do this, but it might be a suggestion, and that would go for all of our schools, is some sort of mentorship program that works really well, especially with immigrant students. I came to this country as a child, and I know how it is to see someone that perhaps looked like me or succeeded. So have some sort of mentorship program. It helps a lot with kids knowing that and see that it is possible, even keeping them out of trouble, giving them some, as so many things that we do as schools, as an education system, give them some incentive to see, you know, perhaps my colleagues or my peers are telling me to go this direction, but I want to be like that person, so I need to go in the other direction. It is really powerful, and I've talked to a lot of kids, both in Everett and outside of Everett, there are a lot of kids that go to the State House a lot and meet with the governor, and they bring that up a lot, especially when kids come from Lawrence or from Springfield or from Chelsea districts that are similar to ours. It is something for us, if we don't have already, to perhaps think about it, because it is really, I don't have data to show how powerful it is, I only have 101 talking to them and C-10 talking to my boss, that it really, it's impactful, especially for immigrant kids.
That's a very good point, and I think that's why we've also made a very conscious effort to recruit staff to work in our buildings that represent the students that we serve. And I think that that is absolutely one way to set examples, that we do value the diversity of our staff, and that those individuals also serve as mentors, leaders, that kids look up to, and I'm looking out at the audience to a particular new principal, and she's really been that kind of a person for us in some critical time. And so it does make a difference, and we're doing it student by student sometimes, but we, I wholeheartedly agree with you.
Thank you both for the work that you do, and all of you in your schools as well.
Ms. Garen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to respond, Mr. Baugh, there is a mentorship program that's with high school students. I know my husband's been working on that particularly. I would love to see maybe that expanded somehow, particularly to the younger kids. I think that would be a wonderful idea. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Ms. Garen. Ms. Babcock.
Yes, so one compliment, I wanted to say, I really liked the individual thought and the turn and talk for the math, because for that, you know, shire learner, the minute or analytical learner, some time to think for themselves, and for that chatty person, to be able to turn and talk about the conversation, because some people are listening learners and having a conversation with someone else, and working collaboratively is helpful for them, and for someone who is analytical, that time to talk, time to think by themselves is great, because not everybody is going to shout out the answer. So, that was my compliment. I think the data chats sound great, the thought about sending, setting their own individual goals to meet, even thinking about goal-setting at a younger age and thinking, ooh, I have something that I can achieve. I know that when my daughter and her friends were in school, they competed over doing extra math. It was, it was like, I mean, it was really, they were, so, it was kind of a small thing, but setting those specific goals and having the idea that you can set a goal for yourself and meet it is very important at any age, really. So I guess my question really is, is that I saw a little image of one of the, is it an app? Like, how are they setting it? Are they just, are they, or is that just the way you made it look on screen?
It was a template that we designed on Canva.
It looks great. So how did the students, you know, decide that goal? And you said it's a weekly goal?
No, it is.
Or monthly?
Beginning of the year, then we revisit the goals middle of the year.
Okay, perfect.
And then another chance at the end of the year.
Great.
And just to wrap everything up.
Right.
But the teachers have been having individual meetings with our students as young as kindergarten, and what they would do is they would pull up the iReady chart or diagnostic results and show them visually where they are right now, where they ended up at the beginning of the year, and on the iReady platform, it shows the students and the teachers exactly where they need to go to meet their typical growth for like the middle of the year, and then for stretch growth towards the end.
Well, the chart was so great.
Oh, thank you.
I thought, I thought it was like a fancy app. I guess my last question, and I think we might all be interested, is how are the students motivated to do or perform or do the best they can on the MCAS? Because a standardized test, let's face it, isn't really a lot of fun. So what is, how do you motivate the students and sort of encourage them that it is going to be helpful for them to do their best?
Yeah, I think that is something that we're constantly working on, right? Encouraging our students to do well on these standardized tests is definitely not easy, but there are ways that we've tried in the past where we've had pep rallies to kind of motivate them, again, going back to the scores that they have set on their own, really holding that student ownership of their learning, that it is important, not just for your teachers, not for your principals, but for yourself and your educational journey, and really just encouraging them that this matters because of their education.
What about test-taking anxiety? I know that a lot of kids think, oh, here's the big day, you know, we're going to do this now. How, what is in place for that, you know, nervous test-taker?
Yeah, testing anxiety for sure is a thing for our students, it's a thing for our teachers as well, but we as school leaders, I feel like we come up with creative ways, whether it be the grade-level team of teachers designs their T-shirts and, you know, has little Post-its that say like, good luck, you're going to do great on the MCAS, or having little fidgets that they could kind of utilize during testing. But it's really, really just meeting the needs of the students, I guess, and their individual needs when it comes to test-taking.
Thank you for all that information. I know that standardized testing is, I mean, and it doesn't stop, you know, when you go to PSATs and SATs and then whatever it is, it's, you think, okay, I got this, and then you are nervous. And so I'd like to know, you know, at that level. So that was very, very helpful, thank you. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Mr. Lambrecht, because I'm sure you're dealing with the same thing at your school as well.
Yeah, I think the main thing is to get student buy-in, through their parents as well, let them know that we're all in this together, we're working together. I think that a positive relationship between the students and the teachers is key as well. Teachers want, students want to do well for their teacher. They want to, you know, make sure that they know how much, they care for their teacher, so I think a positive relationship between student and teachers is key as well. But also just informing parents and letting parents know how important this test is for their child and their child's future, and it's just, you know, one way of us measuring what they know at this time during their educational career.
Thank you, Ms. Babcock. Ms. Cornelio.
Yes, I like everything I heard, and this is basically new, like you implemented it this year, the beginning of the year?
The data chats?
The data chats.
Yes.
Yes, and you're going to progress with it? You're going to keep it going?
Oh, yes.
I think it's a good thing, and I like, you know, all the rewards and that the students are involved, and I think it gives them like a sense of, you know, pride, like, oh, I'm involved in this, you know? I think it's a great thing.
I think it's also a good example, it's we, Mr. McLucus at the Whittier kind of spearheaded this last year with his school, and it was an example of him sharing with all of the school and district leaders his efforts, and other school leaders hearing about that effort, and also looking at the research, the very powerful strategy to improve achievement when we allow learners to be able to be engaged in setting goals, to think about where they are in their learning, and to think about what are my actions, what is my responsibility as a learner, how do I own my own learning, even as a kinder, and we're setting the stage as they're going up in the grades. And it's an example of the collaboration of the school leaders, hearing from each other and building upon each other's ideas and making their own, their own. It looks different at the Whittier than it does at the Lafayette and it does at the English, but the staff and the school community is developing what, a strategy for implementing an idea that we know will have impact on our students, will have impact on achievement, but will have long-term impact on our own learner's ability to engage in college and career in the future.
Yeah, I think it's a wonderful thing, and I really applaud all of you, really. Keep it up, I just loved what I saw tonight. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cornelio. I have a question, if anyone else has any questions, if I may, from the chair. Perfect. I appreciated that there's an instructional leadership team. I was just wondering if you could explain for the room and parents at home, how are instructional coaches providing support?
So each of the schools in Everett, we have our own instructional leadership team where the principals, assistant principals, coaches kind of sat to share, I guess, ideas on who would be the best teacher representatives for our instructional leadership team. And during these meetings, we meet monthly, and this district has kind of mapped out what each ILT meeting would look like, whether it be analyzing data, analyzing student work, creating next steps, just based on our data. And then we take those ideas and bring it to the field, right? We take it to the classrooms, we share our strategies, and during our professional learning communities is where we really look at the work that the ILT has done. I think so far, it has been really successful. Our ILT, we're making sure that there are representatives from like the K to 2 area, 3 through 5, we have coaches, we have interventionists all part of this team. So everyone kind of has a role in a different perspective to offer when it comes to developing next steps. I think what's important is that we're really looking at the data as a team to drive our next steps.
And we do that in each school, the ILT is instructional leadership team. We also do it at the district level, we convene folks, myself, Margaret, there's others that participate in conversations and look at it across the board. Is the strategy working? Can we do something different? Is this something we want to bring to scale because it works better at, you know, the Lafayette? Could we try it somewhere else? So it's an ongoing conversation, it's a regular review, it's retooling as necessary. Again, we want our kids to succeed, and we want to find ways, strategies, and ideas that will move that needle each and every year. And so, again, even though there's lots of meetings and review of information, it does inform our decisions, and it does make a difference when we institute those changes. And again, this year, we saw that happen, so we're going to continue to do that because that strategy's working, and we will continue to do that until we are at 100% across all of those grade, all the grades, and of course, all the math, ELA, and so forth. So, thank you, Janet, it was wonderful.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Are there any other questions?
Excuse our customers. Our guests, of course, my thanks, thank you so much for the work that you do.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barrows, seconded by Ms. Babcock, to excuse our guests with the customary thanks, roll call. Go Lions, by the way.
Mr. Almeda Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, 9-0.
9-0, motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Item number three, acceptance of a Partnership for Reading Success Massachusetts Prism Grant. It's a continuation grant for $147,000. This is funded by DESI, our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I'm asking for your favorable action.
Move to favorable action.
Second.
Favorable action from Ms. Babcock, seconded by Ms. Cornelio, to accept the Partnership for Reading Success Massachusetts Prism III FY26, continuation grant in the amount of $147,000, roll call.
Mr. Almeda Barrows.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes, sorry.
Ms. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Mr. DiNofrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, 9-0.
So moved, 9-0, motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Item number four, acceptance of a clothing donation with an estimated retail value of $30,000 from the company True Religion. And I'd like to just call out and thank our Gavirian School eighth-grade math teacher, Rachel Rappa, and her sister, who actually works for True Religion. The donation comes 14 boxes of clothing, about 350 pieces in total for students of all ages, and again, the estimated value is approximately $30,000, these are new items. And then once the acceptance by this committee of this gift, Mr. Norman will begin the distribution process, and of course, allow for some clothing to be used at Christmas time, when most of our families do come forward, and we use gifts that are donated to the Everett Public Schools, like clothing, like gift cards, to support those families in what should be happy times. So I'd ask you for favorable action on the acceptance of this gift.
I move for favorable action.
Second. Favorable action from Ms. Cornelio, seconded by Ms. Barrows, to accept the closing donation with an estimated retail value of $30,000 from the company True Religion. Roll call. Ms. Babcock.
Just a quick question for Mr. Hart. How will they be distributed? Because, you know, that is kind of a nice brand. So it will be distributed just based on?
Need, and I think Mr. Norman's here, but I think wants to accept the gift, and we go through each of those items, I think that we'll look at those and come up with a plan using our staff at the school to help decide how we're most equitable to get it to the kids who really need it.
Perfect.
And some are quite obvious that need help.
Thank you, Ms. Babcock. Roll call.
On the motion.
On the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Can we just make sure we send a letter of thanks both to True Religion and to the teachers who organized that?
And a letter of customary thanks to the motion, and roll call.
Mr. Almeda Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Mr. DiNofrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved, 9-0.
So moved, 9-0, motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Item number five, request approval to rent classroom space at Everett High School to the Everett Adult Learning Center. I'm asking for favorable action on this request, but we normally waive the fee associated with rental, because this is courses and classes offered here at the Everett High School when our building is open on Monday and Wednesdays from late October into early May. This is not an unusual request, I'm just asking for favorable action, please.
Move to favorable action.
Second.
Motion for favorable action from Ms. Cornelio, seconded by Ms. Babcock, to approve the rental classroom space at Everett High School. the rental classroom space at Everett High School to the Everett Adult Learning Center. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Ms. Garen?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, nine zero.
So moved, nine zero, motion passed. Superintendent, the next item on the agenda.
Roman numeral seven, item submitted by school committee members. Number one, ratification of the superintendent's amended contract offered by Chairperson Hurley.
Thank you, everybody. While the clerk hands out the amended contract for the superintendent, the school committee met in executive session. We are here to ratify the amended contract. The contract, what was added was a contract extension through June 30th, 2031, salary adjustment retroactive to July 1st, 2024 with annual colis, swapping the word annuity for pre-tax contribution, and changing annual amounts from 3,000 to 6,000 retroactively, minor date, context, grammar, and punctuation changes. Attorney Galvin discussed and confirmed these adjustments, which were the only changes as voted by the committee with Superintendent Hart. Then we met with Superintendent Hart, myself, and Jean Cristiano on a conference call to make sure that it was consistent with what was voted on in executive session. So as you review, the motion for this would be for the committee to vote to ratify the amended superintendent's contract dated October 20th, 2025, that was approved by unanimous vote of the committee in executive session on October 6th, 2025.
Make a motion to ratify contract.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, again, Jean.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to vote to approve the amended contract with all the details included.
I second that.
Motion has been made by Ms. Cristiano, seconded by Ms. Cornelio, to ratify the amended superintendent's contract dated October 20th, 2025. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Ms. Garen?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, nine zero.
So moved, nine zero, motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Madam Chairman? Madam Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Cristiano.
I'd like to move for reconsideration on that matter, in the hopes it does not prevail.
There's a motion for reconsideration. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Cristiano, seconded by Mr. Mayor, for reconsideration. Before we do roll call, a yes vote would be yes to reconsider this piece. A no vote would be no, not to reconsider. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows?
No.
Ms. Babcock?
No.
Ms. Barrows?
No.
Ms. Cornelio?
No.
Ms. Cristiano?
No.
Mayor Di Maria?
No.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
No.
Ms. Garen?
No.
Madam Chair?
No.
Reconsideration fails, nine zero.
Nine zero, reconsideration fails. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Before I read number two, I wanted to thank the committee for their vote of confidence. And I pledge to you that I will continue to do the work of this committee, of the work of our schools and our community in particular. And we will continue to work upwards and onwards to get our kids to where they need to be to be successful, contributing members of our society beyond the walls of Everett Public Schools. So thank you again for your vote of confidence. I truly appreciate it. And to all the men and women that are sitting here in front of me that I work with every day, I have a great privilege to do this work because of the work they do, the leadership they show, and the energy they have provided in the schools in the various capacities they've held. And I'm so happy to be associated with each of them and the work that we all do. We have a lot more to go, though, right? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Item number two, Shore Collaborative Update. Chairperson Hurley.
Thank you, everyone. We have provided a newsletter and a pamphlet in your folders. Following our first board meeting of the school year, I'm happy to report from the Shore Collaborative as required by DESI. The Shore is proud to celebrate the 16 staff members who recently completed their interpreter certifications. These team members now bring professional language interpretation skills to the program, ensuring that families and individuals receive information and support in the language they understand best. The admin offices in Chelsea have rented cubicle space to FKO for kids only. It's inspiring to have organizations that share the same mission working alongside each other. It was just wasted unused space, and now they are opening their doors to fellow organizations. SPD Hospitality has joined Shore Student Services as the new food service provider. They hit the ground running, working hand in hand with the food service coordinator for a smooth and successful transition. Students have had nothing but nice things to say. The Shore Collaborative has started the 2025-2026 school year with our highest September enrollment ever of 210 students, while adult services are operating steadily with over 300 participants. The Shore welcomed 14 students, sorry, 140 students, families, and guests to their back-to-school open house, students left with full backpacks, fresh haircuts, and some sweet treats from food trucks. The Shore's very own Brian McCauley, better known as BMAC the Blindcaster, celebrated his 500th podcast episode, a huge milestone that was celebrated at the Peabody Adult Service location. Congratulations, BMAC. Additional congratulations are in order for our adult services program. Congratulations to Megan in Sagina, who has been promoted to program director, and Lorraine Rebado, who is stepping into her new role as case management coordinator. Shore Student Services has welcomed Dana Guthrie, a licensed teacher of the visually impaired, to further enhance access to programs for students who need visual supports. Students with visual impairments have limited ability to learn in the same way their sighted peers do. Dana conducts visual assessments that help determine what unique modifications, accommodations, and access skills each student needs to be successful. Welcome to the team, Dana. I would like to extend a heartfelt congratulations to the Shore Collaborative as they celebrate their 50th anniversary. There'll be multiple events throughout the year. And that is my report from the Shore Collaborative.
Accept the report, place on file. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Second, the motion.
Motion has been made by Mayor Di Maria, seconded by Ms. Cristiano, to accept the report of the Shore Collaborative and place on file. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio?
Yes.
Ms. Garen?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, nine zero.
So moved, nine zero, motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Item number three, a discussion on social and emotional protocols in response to ICE activity in the community, offered by both Ms. Garen and Ms. Babcock.
Ms. Garen?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So this was, I wanted to bring this up specifically as an agenda item. A teacher had spoken to me, and he was saying, you know, we're really concerned, what is the school committee doing? I know, like I said, we've spoken about it at some point, but there is a lot of rumors going around, there's a lot of fear going around. And, you know, obviously, this 13-year-old boy from the Parlin was taken by ICE out of state. And we, there's not, the school committee only has a certain amount of control. Obviously, we can't control over what the federal government is doing, but we have ways of supporting our students, supporting their families, and ways to make them feel safe. I just wanted to have everyone speak about this, especially from Superintendent Hart, about what we're doing and what we can continue to do to help everyone feel safe and supported.
I would like to echo what Ms. Garen said as well. You know, the, we may not see this always highlighted in the news, but these events are impacting people in our communities. And it does create fear for students and families to see something happen or hear about, you know, someone's family member being detained by ICE. So I thought that it would be very important to add here. I wanted to just say something which I'm sure the superintendent will talk about. As educators, there's something called FERPA, which information about students can't be released. And it's a shame that information about a juvenile and about a child has been circulated in the community. That also creates confusion and fear as well. So FERPA means that as educators, we can't talk about a student's education, what's going on in their school systems. I'm sure that Mr. Hart, when he informs us on this, that he will say the same things. It is not just true at this level, it is true at the college level. Students have the right to privacy in their education and what happens in the schools. This is between, what happens in the schools is between the parents and the students and the educators. So I know there's a lot of people making comments about why isn't the schools doing anything. But frankly, it can't really be discussed. But what we can discuss are holistic approaches to support the emotional well-being of children and families in cases where they may feel upset or really fearful due to these circumstances. So I think this is all I have to say. I think I'd rather put this in the hands of the superintendent, because I know he is working on supporting our students' social and emotional needs in this area, and the families.
Perfectly stated, Ms. Babcock. Thank you so much for that overview of FERPA and the relationship that we have with privacy of our students. You know, quite frankly, the FERPA laws, which is federal law, protects our students, quite frankly, more than the average person walking in one of our buildings. It is a very strong law, and intentionally so, because so many people can do so much harm with information that they shouldn't have. And for people who opine about things that they have no knowledge of, is equally damaging. I think, you know, the best thing that we can do is what we're doing in the schools, and that is supporting the student, and the family, and the families, and the other students, and the staff. And we're doing it very intentionally and very carefully. So we have not deliberately made any public comment about it. Of course, nobody wants to see a child taken from their community under any circumstances against their will, regardless of the circumstances that took them out of the city. We will continue to pay attention to all those signals and signs in this community to ensure that our kids are safe when they walk in our doors, and are safe while they're inside our buildings. To that extent, and I think you heard some of that tonight, we have programs in place. It is an intentional way of supporting our students through our social, emotional learning. And again, I'm going to thank the school committee because, and Mayor Di Maria, for two years ago, my first budget before you was to include additional social workers and staff to support our students, because it is at this level that we see our kids, and they come to us for help and support, direction, and we want to give that to them. So we added 20 additional social workers to our small but mighty force that was here, to our guidance staff. Each of these folks bring an exceptional amount of talent and expertise dealing with all kinds of, quote, crisis. And crisis takes on many, many forms, from death in a family, to suicide, to all kinds of mental health issues, and of course, anything as traumatic as what I think this community has felt in the past two weeks now. And what happens is, it's only exacerbated by the fact that, you know, social media can be so helpful, but it also can be so hurtful. And I've seen way too much of that happening. And I want to think that people, regardless of what they feel about our school system, about me, about any of us, that at the end of the day, they do care about that child. And shame on those that decide that they're using it for anything but supporting that child. So what we've done in the school system, and there's so many kind and good people in this community, many of them are sitting right in front of you, who do this every day, who take it on the shoulder, take it on the hip, however you want to call it, and work with our children and their families. And I called out earlier a person who has been a quiet hero in this latest piece. And I call her a hero because she has had that quick and strong relationship with the parent, to ease some fear, to work alongside the parent, to bring information to her that helped this parent understand what we could do for them and what we couldn't do for them. Above all that, that happens in all of our schools. And I would ask, with your indulgence, we also communicated, and I say we, I sent a direct letter on two occasions to our staff to remind them of FERPA, to remind them of our role in this process, that we're here to educate our children. And things that happen around us, we sometimes have no control, just like Ms. Garen said. We don't. We just have no authority. We don't even have a say in some cases. But what we can do is what we do in our buildings. And that's what we do really well. And so, with your indulgence, I may call upon our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Lynch, to come up, because from the get-go, we have looked at ways to be sure that our school community, those people at any of the schools, knew that we were there to support them. And I think Mr. Lynch can also tell you that while we had some difficult days, our parents showed up in record number at our events, our community of learners was still occurring. We had a very insignificant drop in enrollment the day after this incident occurred. It was a Friday of a long weekend. We look back, and we said, it was the same last year on a Friday of a long weekend. Happened to be a very cool Friday, too. So we bounced right back. This is a resilient community of resilient people. And while we want all of our kids to be in our buildings, some just can't be, unfortunately, with us. I took the additional steps to ensure that my role as superintendent, my concern for that child, was heard by folks who I thought, who I thought had some impact with federal agencies. I spoke with the Office of Senator Markey. I spoke with Congresswoman Presley's office, very much advocates for our city and our children. And there's so much that I can't really say, but I think each of us have done our piece, and now we hope for his safe return to Everett. With that, if you would allow Mr. Lynch to come up, he may have some additional comments to add.
Make a motion to bring Mr. Lynch?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Barrows, seconded by Ms. Cornelio, to invite Assistant Superintendent Dennis Lynch before us. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio? Ms. Garen?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, nine zero.
So moved, nine zero. Motion passed. Welcome, Mr. Lynch. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Obviously, it's been a trying time over the last couple weeks here, but I believe the superintendent really just hit the nail on the head with a lot of what I was going to talk about and mention before. A lot of this is privacy of the student, privacy of the families. Being a juvenile, obviously, a lot of information has been put out. So I'm going to speak more holistically on what we've been doing in the schools. This really started back in January, when some guidance came out from the Attorney's General's Office. Since that time, I know, I've been working closely with the Attorney's General's Office, with the Office for Immigration and Refugees, also came out with some guidance. About a week and a half ago, they had a great training for our public schools, just on know your rights, the rights of immigrant students, the rights of all students in actuality. And, you know, what should occur, should something like this happen in the schools? Because there is a protocol. And I can say, we have those protocols in place. And when this came to our attention, you know, later on in the day, the superintendent, I was on the phone with him, he was on the phone with members of the leadership team, trying to figure out what we could do, what we can do, and what we did do. And, you know, reaching out to those different offices, the Attorney's General's Office, out through there, that is like step one, to make them aware. Now, we are not, we are a school, so we are here to educate, keep our kids safe. We do not enforce immigration law. We don't care about immigration law. We have a right to educate every single student, regardless of what their background is. We don't care, and we should not care. And that, I believe, is the most important thing for our families, for our teachers, for staff, for everyone, to remember, is that the student in front of us is the student in front of us, and we're there to educate them. We don't ask about immigration status. We don't care about immigration status. We don't report immigration status. That is all held privately information with us. Most of the time, we don't know, right? So, you know, when something like this comes through, I can tell you that guidance that came down in just dealing, and it's trauma-enforced instruction. And I want to thank members of this committee who were also here, going on three years ago, when I gave the presentation, when I became the principal of the high school, and was asked, how can you help? And I think one of the asks that we had was getting more social workers, more guidance staff into our buildings. You answered that call, so that's great. So we have 50 that's great. So we have 52 guidance staff. Out of the 52 guidance staff, 20 of them are licensed social workers who will deal with these type of issues when they come up. Now, I did look through. I was in contact with school leaders. Um, were there some students who came forward showing concern? Yes. And they were met with staff. They, you know, gave their concerns. And us as a staff, us as a school, we cannot promise anything, but we can hear them. We can be compassionate and we, you know, and we can work with families to go forward. And I think it's very important that we remind our families, remind our community that that is our role, right? We are not here to enforce anything outside of our purview. We don't get political on one side or the other, or we should not. Is, and that is the guidance that the superintendent sent out. And that is guidance that came directly from the governor's office, the Attorney's General's Office, and the Office for, um, for Immigration and Refugees. What we do report throughout the year is, you know, student attendance data, their name, their gender, ethnicity, home language, um, things, their conduct, discipline records. Those are all reported to the, to the state through the feds. The reason we do that is that's our funding. That's how they judge our schools. We talked a lot about accountability and MCAS. That's how we're judged. So all of that information is tracked. What is not tracked in that entire thing is if someone is here legally or illegally. If you are a student who entered the country in the last, if you have been a student who has not attended full-time public school for three years, you are listed as an immigrant and you have your country of arrival. So if a student came from Brazil, if a student came from Guatemala, Canada, Mexico, wherever they may have come, after three full years, we as a district turn that over. That is all from the federal government that says that now they are no longer considered an immigrant and their home of residence automatically becomes the United States. It's just something, I just want to try and get any misconceptions on what we report or we go out because there is a lot of misinformation. There's a lot of information for the privacy of this family and all of our families in general, that we shouldn't be sharing this because it is a traumatic event for the family. It's traumatic for our staff and students, and we may not know the whole impact. But as I think Ms. Babcock said earlier, that is between the families, the school.
Yeah.
And the related parties, not third parties, individuals. So we have the Wayfinda Curriculum, which is a K through 12 curriculum, which teaches everything from self-reliance and great decision-making. But I can tell you, as they come forward, you know, unfortunately, not only in this community, but all communities, our kids deal with a lot of trauma, a lot. You know, this is just one recent incident, but we've had students, unfortunately, who have had deaths of parents or siblings or, you know, substance abuse, incarceration of other family members. And, you know, they, those students come to our school for that reassurance. And I can say very confidently, having been a principal in a K through eight building, the high school, and now the central office, that these are issues that our teachers deal with every day and that our kids and our families really deal with every day. So I, I know it's, it's a lot to, it's, I said a lot without saying a lot, just because I can't share so much. But I can tell you that this has been an intentional effort from months ago. These protocols were in, in, in place. If anyone heard anything, they were instructed, we were there multiple times with the superintendent and the principal, to let us know, let the central office know, so that we can take it by a case-by-case basis because it really is a case-by-case basis with these students. And we're willing to do that work. We're going to continue to do that work. And, you know, and, and we'll take it from there. But I can, speaking for, on behalf of Dr. Wallace, who was very involved in the, um, Sewell Department, he met with his staff and also put out that guidance to there. So our guidance counselors, our social workers, our teachers are really on heightened alert, really to look out. The other thing that we're taking with compassion is if there are situations like this, we are being compassionate about attendance. You know, I'm trying, if, if students are saying, you know, I'm afraid to come to school, or if I have this issue, or they may be dealing with an issue, we are going to deal with that again on a case-by-case basis and not hold the attendance and get them. Try to get the education they need so they're not missing everything. All the great work that we have been doing, we want to make sure that that's extended out to every single one of our students.
It's a tough situation, as you can all imagine. Um, and I appreciate Ms. Garen and Ms. Babcock bringing it forward. It gives us an opportunity to clear the air about what we can and can't do. And obviously, we can't share a lot of information, but I can tell you, uh, that our staff has been very responsive. Um, and they need to be, quite frankly. Um, it's, it's a child not here with us that should be. So, um, I appreciate everyone's concern, and I know that there's generally a lot of good people in Everett that worry about this situation. And rest assured that we're doing everything that we can do to make this experience the best for those that are here. And, um, when that child returns, uh, we will find an opportunity to make sure that he is successful in returning to Everett. Period.
And I, I would also be happy to share out the training that I did take. That, that's a PowerPoint that I think is, it's actually just a great reminder and it really, you know, it really shows kind of what the school's responsibility is, you know, during that fact. It comes with a, a ton of scenarios that, oh, if, if A happens, then you do, you do B, right? And you go forward from there. So I'd be happy to share that, um, with this, with this committee, obviously, so you can see through just for your information as well and just what we're going. And it was, it's a great resource also that we can share out with our families, uh, knowing your rights and, and going forward. But, you know, unfortunately or fortunately as the school, you know, it's, it's, we're very limited in what we can do other than just protect and then deal with what we can deal with as we go forward for all of our students and families.
And we have good partners, um, with the police. Um, I know a speaker earlier was concerned about the police involvement. They have been nothing but supportive of us in our work with our kids, um, and have been an active participant in helping us keep them safe. Um, and we have community partners, the, um, Elliott Family Resource Center as a referral. We have the Cambridge Health Alliance for referral. This is again, not just for students, but for families. Um, so we're looking at the whole, the whole piece here. It's, um, it is just one of those traumas that the Everett Public Schools is dealing with in its portfolio of items that we've dealt with, at least in the short term that I've been here for two years. Um, and, and we don't take this lightly. I know, again, none of the folks in front of you do that. Uh, we have great partnerships with the parents and, and these agencies that support our work.
Thank you, Superintendent Hart. Ms. Garen.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Lynch, I just, uh, wanted to thank you so much for your comments. Um, and I like the way you put it. Basically, it doesn't matter what their immigration status is when they're in school. Their, their children are there to get an education.
Yeah.
And to be safe and to be cared for. Um, so I'm very glad to hear that. Um, yeah, I personally would love to.
I will.
Get a copy of that training, you know, just so I can be more informed for myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garen. Mr. Barrows.
Uh, just, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to mention that that training is available also to, to, uh, school committees. Um, so perhaps we can work with, actually, that office, the Office of Refugees and Immigrants, they were working with the Mass Association of School Committees to offer that training. Um, they've already trained over a thousand, uh, professionals and individuals, both in the education field, through the unions, uh, as well. And they were working both with the Mass Association of School Superintendents, which they already provided the training, uh, to superintendents. And they were next step with the Mass Association of School Committees to provide that training. It's online. Uh, it's live. It's done by Susan Church, which one, which is one of the top immigration lawyers in, in the, uh, in the state, um, to offer that to school committees. So I, I can talk to them, uh, see how we, we are at in that process. And she can even offer one for the school committee, for the Everett School Committee, uh, itself, without the need to wait for the entire school committees across the state to do it.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Ms. Babcock.
Uh, through you to Mr. Barrows. I think that's really important because the truth is, um, most, a lot of us don't actually know what those, those rights exactly are. You, you may not know what those rights are. We, you, you know, you see a lot of social media that mentions some of them, but there's so much incorrect information and to have everyone on the same page is very important. Um, I have one question for, uh, Mr. Lynch. You mentioned that you did this, the know your rights training. Um, who else did it with you?
So that was, so it was available to, it was available to all, like Mr. Barrows said, it was available out, it went to a lot of the schools. So we're just signing up and, and going forward. So it was, I was on, I, it was through via Zoom, but there was thousands of people, uh, you know, on this call because we're not the only community, obviously, in the United States or even locally dealing with, with these issues. So I think it's just an important refresher even just for, you know, because they spoke a lot about FERPA. They spoke a lot about these issues that we need to be reminded of on students' and families' rights, you know, when it comes to that. And then it also speaks about, you know, the authority of ICE, you know, if they were to come into the buildings or if, anything like that, which has not happened. Um, but we do have those protocols in place, like the point of contact would be our principals, like they would be the, the individuals to speak with them. Then they would reach out to the superintendent's office. We do have now our attorney on staff. So like, one, one issue or one, it sets off our protocols to go forward. And so the guidance that they have given us, and remember, it's just guidance that they have given us, but we have been, we have been following for now months. Um, and as more information comes out, you know, we learn it, we take it, and so we can best serve our students. Um, that's on that guidance. The, you know, what we're doing in our schools, I think hopefully is pretty obvious, you know, to everyone, that we're just really trying to do the best for our students regardless of any circumstance that they face, both inside or outside of school.
And let me be clear, I did also let the staff know that if anyone, uh, was going to breach or thought about breaching any of confidentiality, they would be met with, with, um, with punishment, if, if you will. Um, I can't, I just can't have that. I just can't have, um, staff deciding that they were going to share information if they think they know it. I don't even, I said, I don't even want to hear that, you know, the person's middle initial. And I want to also, um, thank, um, working with the union president, um, we all understand the importance of that child's privacy and this family's or anybody hereafter, and hopefully there's nobody hereafter. Um, it, it's that important.
Thank you. Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to give you one information, uh, especially for our families so they can feel comfortable at home. Um, something that it's happened recently, even though we can't control the federal government, but a few months ago, about three months ago, uh, the governor signed a supplemental budget, that part of that supplemental, there are, there were a few policy changes. One of them, we codify into law, into Massachusetts law, the rights of students to go to school and not be asked about immigration status. As we know, students are educated. It's a Supreme Court decision that they are educated regardless of their immigration status, nationality, uh, what language they speak. But if the Supreme Court were to change that, that would be a problem. So if they decided to change that, which I don't think it will happen, in Massachusetts, we are safe. It's codified into, codified into law. Um, so now it's a state law. Even if the Supreme Court decides to change that, in Massachusetts, students will continue to be educated regardless of their immigration status, country of origin, uh, and whatever language they speak. So it's now, it's codified into Massachusetts law. It's something that happened three months ago. DSC is working, um, to send guidance to school districts, um, which, which is great. So our families should feel safe that, you know, this amazing work that Everett Public Schools, uh, does, um, there is nothing that will affect their immigration status or any, uh, ask that, uh, they, they should be concerned about. Uh, because now they are even protected under Massachusetts laws. So, just, just as a point of information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Ms. Cornelio.
Yes, I'd just like to make a statement that, um, I was approached too about, um, this incident. And I just want to put it out there that people should not be spreading rumors that they don't even know about, and they're spreading the wrong things. They don't even have the facts. And that can be a dangerous thing. They're actually causing more harm than good. So please, do not listen to rumors. It's under investigation and nobody wants anything bad happening. So go with the facts, wait, listen, and learn. Don't be spreading rumors. This one told you that. No one has these facts. If we don't, I'm sure people on the street don't. So please, wait, let them investigate, and then you'll hear it. We don't want any harm come to any students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cornelio. Any further questions for Assistant Superintendent Lynch? Seeing none. He can hang here all night if he wants.
Make a motion to excuse Mr. Lynch with the customary thanks.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to excuse Assistant Superintendent Lynch. Um, roll call.
Ms. Almeida Barrows.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved nine zero.
So moved nine zero. Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Um, if I may, um, I would just like to, from a parent point of view, say that I do appreciate everything that Everett Public Schools does for our children when they are in our buildings. They feel loved, cared for, and that's their safe space. Um, you have my children more than I have my children. They love being in school. They love, they, I'm sure I'm not their favorite person. Teachers are. Paraprofessionals are. Um, I believe in this district. I love this district. I grew up in Everett. I chose Everett as a home. I'm here forever. Um, and just thank you for all that you're doing. You go above and beyond your scope of regular duties.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms., Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I also, to Superintendent Hart, uh, to you and your team, Principal Braga here at the high school, uh, CHA, Elliott, your principals, vice principals, guidance counselors, the entire staff, I too want to thank them for always, uh, uh, keeping the child interests at, to the heart. Uh, it really means a lot as a father here in the public school system, like Chairman Hurley said. Uh, we truly do appreciate the, um, everybody in the audience here for what you have committed yourselves to do here in, in public schools. And, um, as a father, I also truly appreciate all of you. Uh, there's a lot of teachers that reach out directly to me and, um, and I appreciate that. I really do. So I, I want to thank you all for, it's not an easy job, but I want to thank you for doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ms. Garen, Ms. Babcock.
Make a motion to return to sponsor.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Garen, seconded by Ms. Babcock to, um, refer this item back to sponsor. Um, thank you both for putting this on. This was a great conversation, and I'm happy that the public got to hear, um, everything. Roll call.
Ms. Almeida Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved nine zero.
So moved nine zero. Motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Roman numeral eight, Subcommittee Reports. Item one, Finance Negotiation Subcommittee for Monday, October the sixth, 2025.
Madam Chairman.
Ms. Cristiano.
I'd like to make a motion to accept, um, waive the reading and accept the committee report as filed.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Cristiano, seconded by Mayor Di Maria to, um, accept the Finance Negotiation Subcommittee Report for Monday, October sixth, 2025, and place on file. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved nine zero.
Nine zero. Motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Roman numeral nine, Bills and Payroll. There are none before you this evening. Roman numeral ten, Unfinished Business. There is none to dispense of. Roman numeral eleven, New Business. There is nothing new on the agenda. Roman numeral twelve, Hearings. There are none scheduled. Roman numeral thirteen, Matters for Executive Session. There are none. And Roman numeral fourteen is Adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
On, motion to adjourn?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Um, typically, we never had meetings the night before election. I, I see that we have a meeting Monday night before election. Is that, am I not true? Is that all right?
I, I think the city council adopted that, but if I recall, last year, we still had a meeting before the, um, election. If I'm not mistaken, I'd have to look back at that. Mr. O'Connor, is that your recollection?
Uh, yes, uh, we did, uh, before the previous election last year.
I think the city council adopted that as a, as a practice, but that's not ours.
Okay.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion had been, has been made by Ms. Barrows, seconded by Mr. Barrows to adjourn.
I think the City Council adopted that as a practice, but that's not ours.
Okay.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Barrows, seconded by Mr. Barrows, to adjourn. Roll call.
Ms. Almeida Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Babcock.
Yes.
Ms. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio.
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Mr. Dinoffrio.
Yes.
Ms. Garen.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So moved 9-0.
So moved 9-0. We have adjourned, the time is 8:30 PM. Thank you, everybody.[1753.36][1753.36][music]